All this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is February 22, 2022. Roll call, please.
Councilor Knutson?
Present.
Gross?
Here.
Quinn?
Present.
Dodd?
Present.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, and various staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Gross, seconded by Knutson. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. The agenda is approved. Item number four is community comments. So this is a time for community members to speak to us about items that are not on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda, but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that individual speakers may need. So is there anyone in the audience? I do not see anyone in the audience this evening that has come to speak to us. So we will move on to item number five. Fiscal year 2023 budget, public hearing. And I see that we have our Director of Finance, Tony Rotland, who is coming up to the table to speak to us. Take it away, Tony.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. So at the last council meeting, we had a presentation of the budget, and we, there are two hearings in this process annually, and one of them, we've already held already. That's the maximum levy hearing. This one is a hearing on the overall budget, not just the property tax revenue side of the equation. And so the, the schedule is that we hold this hearing tonight, and then at the March 8th meeting, the council can consider the budget for adoption.
All right. And then the budget will be filed on or before March 31st, correct?
Correct.
With the county and the state.
Correct.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you very much, Tony. All right. So I will now open the public hearing on the fiscal 2023 budget. And again, is there any, there's, I don't see anyone here who has come to speak to us in person about the budget. We did have one written comment that was submitted.
Yes, Rex Branstadter submitted written comments about the budget to the council.
Right. And so everybody should have a copy of Rex's letter and his comments. We, we always appreciate hearing from Rex every year. He was not able to make it tonight, but the council did receive his, his feedback, and, and we appreciate him taking the time to write to us and share his thoughts. All right. And there were no other comments, written comments? Okay. All right. Fantastic. I will now close the public hearing, and we will then take the final action on the fiscal year 2023 budget at our next council meeting on March 8th, 2022. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Item number six is North Liberty Road and Forever Green Road Roundabout. We have a public hearing on this item.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that we hold this for the, another council meeting due to the staff request.
The staff, okay. All right.
So we're going to deter from number six for that.
Okay. So do we need a motion to?
Since we didn't take it off, I would motion to table it, and it would be a voice, voice vote.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to table this item.
So moved.
Moved by Dodd's. Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. All in favor. Do we do a roll call or just a voice vote?
Voice vote.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Motion is approved, so we will table this item for the next, the next agenda, correct? That's what, yeah, okay. All right. Moving on. Item number seven. Coralville Industrial Park Number Two, Fourth Edition with the public hearing. This would allow for 9,025 square foot, 48-unit storage building addition at 2100 James Street. So I will now open the public hearing on this item. There any comments? Any, any written comments?
No written. Dave Johnson's here.
Okay.
To speak on this.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
This property is currently owned IPUD2, and is designated as industrial in the Coralville Land Use Map. Warehousing and storage are allowed uses in those designations, as well as in this PUD. In addition to the building improvements, the site will also be brought up to current building and landscaping standards. Seven trees and 18 trubs will be added in order to comply with the landscape and appearance standards in Chapter 165.37 of City Code. Most of those trees will be located off the, in the right-of-way to continue that rhythm of pin oaks, as you currently see along James Street. And the front of the building will also be improved. Chapter 165.525 of City Code requires a minimum of 100% of a building wall that fronts a street to be constructed of natural brick, exterior finished insulation system or EFIS, wood siding, stucco or block. So for the facades facing James Street, the corrugated metal you see now will be replaced with stucco panels and a brick panel base. The site plan has been provided for City Council's consideration, and I also believe elevations have been forwarded as well for you to look at. So city staff has reviewed the proposal, and the requested amendment can be considered consistent with the Coralville Community Plan and Zoning, and the proposed PUDB site plan amendment complies with applicable development standards, as well as your City Code.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave for that overview. So if we have no other written comments or comments from the audience, I will close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the amended PUDB site plan for the Coralville Industrial Park Number Two, Fourth Edition, Coralville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or, for Dave, any discussion on this item?
You know, he showed the plans last time, and I think it's a very nice improvement to this property. Really appreciate your work on that.
Awesome. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilor Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. All right. Item number eight is for bonds.
It's my kid.
Oh, okay. Welcome. Feel free to stay and, you know.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah.
Public comments? Okay.
Government inaction and all that, anyway.
Probably doesn't happen. She's out.
You probably don't want to hear the comments for you.
Right?
There'll be plenty of comments when you get home.
All right. Where were we? Bonds. Number eight, Bonds. All right. So the, this is for a borrowing for the Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center Property Improvement Plan pursuant to agreements with Hyatt Franchising and Marcus. And the public hearing for this item will be on March 8th, 2022, and we have our Director of Finance, Tony Rotland, with us again to share some information on this item.
So you may recall that when agreements were entered into with Marcus to manage the Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center, and Hyatt to be the flag or brand name for the hotel and conference center, that there was a property improvement plan agreed to. In addition, this is one piece of the financing. The other piece is something called key money that Hyatt provided back in August or thereabouts when they, when they took over the flag of this, this. I don't know if I did that. I did not touch any buttons. But there's key money that we already have. The city already has been provided, and there's this financing. And this is the project financing, and the permanent financing will follow.
Okay. Thank you very much for that overview, Tony. Don, let's have the resolution.
Resolution to fix the date of meeting at which it is proposed to take action on the proposal to enter into one or more lease purchase agreements or loan agreements in a principal amount not to exceed $15 million for improvements to and equipment for the city's hotel and conference center, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any discussion or comments or questions on this item?
Yeah. What's the total budget here? You talked about a variety of sources of revenue, and Hyatt's contributed some already, but you didn't give us any numbers for that.
Yeah. The, the amount of the key money was $3 million even. This is a not to exceed 15 million. We do not expect it to be an 18 million combined.
The total budget right now is 15 million for the project.
For the whole project?
Yes.
But we don't know exactly where the bids will come in and all that, so.
Right.
I've heard, yeah, bids have coming, been coming in high, right? So who knows?
They did readjust. Marcus re, has re-estimated their bids based on the latest information they have, but yeah, obviously, we'll know better when, once they get to the process of bidding.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number nine is a cooperative use agreement. So this is for a 15-year agreement with the Iowa Soccer Club for the installation of sports lighting and soccer field three at the youth sports park for a project cost donation not to exceed $190,000 in exchange of rights of first refusal to rent blocks of time at soccer fields two and three and install city-approved signage at soccer field three. And we have our Parks and Rec Director, Sherri Proud, to share some information about this item with us.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you summed it up really well. The Iowa Soccer Club has been a long-term renter for the last seven or eight years at the Coralville Youth Sports Park, and approached us about three years ago, just inquiring as to whether we might consider that. And then, of course, COVID hit and delayed things, but they were back in touch late this fall, and talked about wanting to do this again. So like, like you had mentioned, it's 15 years with an additional five, five chances to renew for another five years, so 25 additional years on top of that. They, right now, they use fields two and three quite frequently. They would continue to pay rent at an average price, pricing between the lit and unlit price that we charge, and would store their soccer goals on site, which they do now as well. So this is a great way for us to be able to provide lighting on field three. It also helps our, we play at, at that particular location, we play our adult flag football program, which is really popular, and this will allow us to have another field and be able to expand that program, which has had waiting lists on it. And we're just really excited to be a home field for, home field for the Iowa Soccer Club.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that overview. All right. Don, the resolution, please.
Resolution approving a cooperative use agreement between the Iowa Soccer Club Incorporated and the City of Coralville for the youth sports park soccer fields, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this item? I just would, one thing I would note is that with the, the scheduling blocks, the, the rec center, they, they would be allowed to schedule, but after the rec center has scheduled their, our programming.
Right. We, we use field one about four to five nights a week. We use field two for the adult sport, the adult flag football, and a little bit, we obviously use them on weekends. So this doesn't, doesn't really, it doesn't interfere with what we're already doing. We are working out the language on scheduling, just to make sure that that's understood, how that will, will work in the agreement. So this would be subject to, if there's any changes, subject to city attorney approval on that paragraph. So, but yeah, we see this as a really good opportunity to continue a long-term partnership at that location.
Fantastic. Any other comments or questions, discussion on this item?
How, what are the rules for lighting in terms of how late they can stay on? Obviously, that's residential area.
Mm-hmm. Park, park is, park hours are until 11:00 PM. Our programming typically is done between 9:00 and 10:00 PM. Right now, lights are on between 10:00 and 10:15, they go off up there. The park was in place before any other housing, and those development plans made available to all of the owners that bought houses and lots at that location.
Have we had any complaints?
I have not had any. The only time we get a complaint is if it rains, and the Musco, we forget to call the Musco lighting and say, hey, turn the lights off, we aren't having programming. And we'll get an occasional call that says it's raining out, there's no one there, why are the lights still on? So that's about the only time we've gotten a complaint.
Perfect.
Fantastic. Anyone else have questions or comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 10, West Land Use Area Connection Fees. This is for the city receiving a payment of $118,931 for connection fees for lots 11, 12, and 13 in the Coral Crossing Seventh Edition. Don, the resolution, please.
Resolution acknowledging payment in full of the West Land Use Area Sewer and Water Connection Fees levied against lots 11, 12, and 13, Coral Crossing Seventh Edition, Coralville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 11 is a license agreement. This license agreement is for 920 East Second Avenue, Suite A 101 in the Iowa River Landing, and is, is good through August 31st, 2022. This is for the new active endeavors temporary space in the River Landing. All right. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving that certain license agreement with active endeavors of Davenport is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah. This will, they will go into the temporary space at the north end across from Von Mar. That space is already built out, and then they will work on a permanent lease for a larger space, and they're still in the process of working on that lease. In the Iowa River Landing, yes.
Fantastic.
I think, Madam Mayor, too, I'd like to just say, because I've, I've seen some things on social media, and I've heard some things from folks in Iowa City, I just want to be very clear that, you know, no city incentives were used to entice active endeavors to come. This was 100% a private, independent business decision, and I think it's just important to make sure that the public is very clear on that.
And that we have the, the communication agreement with, with the neighboring municipalities.
Yep.
We're not recruiting them away from another city.
So Kelly, do you want to talk a little bit about how that communication worked?
Yeah. I did notify Jeff Bruin, the city manager of Iowa City, when I was contacted by them. This is a new owner. The building itself was sold in Iowa City, and the landlord, as I understand it, terminated their lease there. So a new owner took them over and need, had to move somewhere, and they chose the River Landing.
I'll say, I shop at Active Endeavors occasionally, get their emails, and was initially very disappointed to hear they were shutting down, and maybe even the same day, I heard they were opening up in the IRL, which was great news, and I think it's a great fit for the IRL.
I would agree. All right. Any other comments on this item? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 12, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would ask the council to please consider a motion to approve the consent calendar A through Q inclusive.
Moved by Dodd's, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross? Quinn?
Aye.
Dodd's?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved, all ayes. Item number 13, city administrators' report.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item, mayor's report. I have a couple of things. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone at our streets department who worked very hard this morning, taking care of the, the roads and the sidewalks. It was kind of an unusual winter storm that we had. So we definitely appreciate their work today and, and always. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the, where I was actually before I came to tonight's meeting. I'm very excited to announce that I was at the Extreme Arena with representatives from the, the Coralville Central Family Resource Center, the Kirkwood Elementary Family Resource Center, the Boys and Girls Club. John Bowler from the Coralville Food Pantry was also supposed to join us, but he was, he was very busy working this evening. But we are providing, or the, the arena and Green State is providing over, or 100 tickets to Disney on Ice, to Coralville families who, who wouldn't ordinarily be able to attend this event. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank the staff at the arena for making this happen, to thank Green State for, for making this happen. This is something I am very passionate about, and something that I am very excited about. This is, you know, I, I think we have this beautiful space, and I am really committed to making sure that everybody in our community has the opportunity to enjoy it. So this is just the first, the first go-around with this, and arena staff is, is very excited to, to look for other opportunities for partnerships down the road. So again, just really thankful that we were able to do that. And then finally, I, I just, I feel compelled to comment on some of the rhetoric that we heard coming out of Des Moines last night. So for those of you who, who may not be following, or who may not be aware, there's a certain group of lawmakers who are pushing legislation that attacks and harms transgender children, women, and, and girls specifically. And, you know, there were, there were some really disturbing and harmful comments that were made by leaders and lawmakers last night. And, and those types of comments, when you're in a position, you know, of leadership, and you make comments where you compare transgender youth to cancer, or to say that they are mentally ill, those types of comments are incredibly destructive to a, a group of already marginalized youth and, and individuals. So I wanted to just take a moment to make it abundantly clear where I stand on that issue, and I want to say to every transgender child, youth, community member in Coralville, that you are valued, you are important, that we care about you, that you are welcomed in our community, and I will do everything that I can to make sure that you are supported, and that you are safe, and that you are included in this community. And that is all I have. All right. City attorneys' report.
I have nothing additional.
Nothing, nothing for me.
Fantastic. Thank you. So we're going to start on this end tonight. Councilmember Knutson?
Well, they don't have much, but I'll second what you just said. I, I, I think, I don't know exactly what was said. I didn't pay that close of attention, but I know we've been talking about this issue, which to me shouldn't make the top 100 things list of things we should be working on and concerned about. Equity in women's sports, I'm sure is how they would phrase it. It's just a culture war issue, and it's sad that that's what they're focused on right now, in my opinion. So I'll second that.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Gross?
Well, I'll third it. I just, you know, before I, so I was going to say, just working at a school where, as Mike said, I mean, it's not an issue. We, we have no students, nor have we, and it's, you know, it's, it's kind of creating a problem that doesn't exist. So it's unfortunate that happened, but thank you, Mayor, for your words. Also, thank you for bringing up the Disney on Ice tickets. I know for my support of the arena, that was an important component that had to be addressed, to making sure that the arena was accessible to all of our families. So it's very important. I'm really, really happy that we're following through on that. And then we did have a CVB board meeting last Thursday, so it was just a couple of updates on that. The, the CVB, along with the Economic Development Agency, the Chamber, some other entities are looking at, you know, finding ways to streamline, to be more efficient, which I think will be something that's good in the future. The other thing that I want to say, that we have put in a bid for, to be the girls' wrestling host for five years, so we are waiting on that. I actually took Josh Amberger to the state wrestling tournament on Friday to introduce him to some key people at the girls' union, to make sure that he had those connections going on. And then finally, regarding the CVB, I want to give a huge shout-out to North Liberty Mayor Chris Hoffman, who stepped down as his role on the CVB board, and we'll be welcoming Councilwoman Harrington as North Liberty's representative. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Quinn, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our, our, our public library just launched the program, Dolly Parton Imagination Library. It's a, it's a great program that has been founded by Dolly Parton, that offer books, you know, free books, high quality for young child from five age to younger. There is a QR code on the, well, there's the website, and also QR code on flyer that posted around town in the library, at the food pantry. You can go there, scan on it, sign your, your children up for, you know, for that. And they send you a book once a month, age-appropriate. So I would encourage people who have young children to take advantage of this program. And I would hope that this program will expand throughout the entire state of Iowa, hopefully soon. Next thing is a free community meal coming up next Friday. It is going to be at the, the Coralville United Methodist Church. It is going to be a to-go meal from 5:30 to 7:30. The address is 806 13 Avenue. We invite everybody to come out. It is open to everybody in the community. You don't have to live in Coralville to participate. We ask that our neighbors either drive and park elsewhere, or walk or bike to the church, and then get in line. You know, masks are required to go into the church, get the meal of your choice, and bring them home and enjoy them with your family. Yeah. Hopefully for a nice weather. We usually have a snowstorm on the day of the meal, every winter, so I'm hoping for nicer weather this time. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodd's?
I want to thank you, Mayor, for bringing that topic up about the transgender. It's disturbing and disgusting at the best, and I just want to be, make sure I'm on board with. I'm on board with letting the public know exactly how you feel, and I think that's, you speak for the council. So thank you for doing that. With that said, I am usually on my soapbox about wearing masks and vaccinations, and even though the country seems to have decided the pandemic is over, it is not. So if you haven't got your vaccines, please do so, and please continue to wear your mask. There is another variant that is out there that we need to keep an eye on, so. And last, I would like everyone to keep the troops in your hearts and prayers for, as things escalate in the Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Councilmember Goodrich?
Just quick recap it up. Hi, was that next Friday, this Friday?
It's next Friday, March 4.
Okay, in March.
I'm sorry.
Thanks. No, that's good. Maybe we will be able to ride our bikes, yeah. I, I guess the only thing that I was thinking about was appreciate the letter from Mr. Rex Branstadter. He comments for us each year about our budget and is very positive and complimentary and encourages us to be involved. And I just want to thank past councilors and our city staff and the, just remind everyone that we are continuing the community plan that has been worked on for years and years. And just thank everyone, the department heads, for all the work that you've done. Good, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn, Mayor.
All right, second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.